We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, December the 19th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jeff?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as Mr. Grady will lead us in prayer and then please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving God, this holiday season, we pray that the abundance of your blessings will be known by all for their neighbors near and far. We pray for peace, we pray for joy, we pray for hope, we pray that the spirit of generosity, forgiveness, and kindness that fills us this time of year might remain with us always, and that we would extend to all people the grace we would have received. As we look ahead to a new year that waits on the horizon of God, may we greet it with enthusiasm, innocence, and purpose for your work in our world. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning to each of you and Merry Christmas. And this morning, as we begin this meeting, again, we welcome you. I do ask that if anyone has their cellphone with them, if they would, please make sure it is on silent to not disrupt this meeting. And we welcome those that may be viewing online this morning also. Commissioners, you have there before your agenda, is there, are there any items you desire to pull or add to today's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as is. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item is the consent agenda. You have there the minutes of the December 5th, 2022, special session and regular session. You had the tax releases and refunds and an economic development request for public hearing on Project Hub. Are there any items that you desire to pull?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jeff?
Yes, thank you. We're honored to have this morning two presentations before the Board of Commissioners and our citizens. First would be the Reviving Lives Ministries presentation. Ms. White is with us, the Executive Director. All right, you can come forward. Thank you. We welcome you this morning.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to be here. Again, my name is Laney White, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the courage in the room. I'm going to share some personal parts of my history, and I just want to thank you for all of the time and courage it takes you to service capacities as your capacity as Commissioners. So, next slide. As I said, I'll tell you a little bit about myself, something called ACES, our focus on wellness, some of the needs we have in our program, and any questions you might have for me. Is anybody already familiar with ACES? All right. I highly recommend you do some research. Because of my time, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time this morning. It is very interesting and important, especially to the joy and the generosity called in our prayer this morning. Next slide, please. So this is me in front of the Mary Tyler Moore statue, and that was one of my favorite shows growing up. Love it. And this was a bright spot in early March this year. I was in Minneapolis for my brother Jay's funeral. He died of an overdose in February. So, I'm the Executive Director at Reviving Lives Ministries, and we minister to people with substance use disorders of many kinds, not just alcohol, but opioids, methamphetamines, you name it. So, I have experience in my family with both mental illness and alcohol use disorder personally. I gave up drinking in December 2019, so this is something very near and dear to my heart. So, my experience as a child led me to become a psych major in college. It was a toss-up between that and education. And so, I then became mental health technician in the United States Air Force National Guard. I also crossed trained into optometry, just bonus information. And four years after that, my daughter was born, I became a yoga teacher, and then, and then a PE teacher at Annunciation Catholic School in Havelock. And so, I became, I got my license while I was teaching there, and then almost as soon as I got my license, I told my principal I wasn't going to teach again next year. So, so then, then the pandemic hit. So, I, I was sober for about three months before the pandemic hit and became Executive Director about a year and a half into my recovery. So, let's go to the next slide. Community is strength, and we use the strength of our community to increase the frequency of long-term recovery. We provide resiliency-focused, trauma-informed care, which in turn increases wellness skills in the men and women that are in our program. And all in all, the work that we do at RLM reduces homelessness, overdose deaths, and recidivism, very important to our community. And let's go to the next slide. Maya Angelou, "The ache for home lives in all of us and the safe place where we can go not be questioned." So, many of us, as children, ached for home, for a safe place. And that is, that is often not what people who suffer from substance use disorder have as children. And you'll see that in the next slide. So, this is an updated form of the ACES study. The tree, you can't really read it, but it's 10. It's things like divorce, alcoholism in the home, somebody being incarcerated, being neglected, or abused. So, in 1995 and 1997, a sample population of 17,000 people were taken, and it came to the conclusion that the main 10 contribute significantly to early death and chronic disease in adults. And I want to again say, if you've never heard of ACES, do a quick Google search and, and learn about how it contributes to homelessness, drug addiction, and, you know, cancer, heart disease. All of these things contribute. So, let's go to the next slide. One, one experience point that I didn't mention in the introduction is that I also became a guardian ad litem for about a year and a half, and I served six children in foster care. And that surprisingly is a very informative experience on how I built the program at RLM. When kids come into foster care, the main first steps are stabilization, get them to all of the doctors that they need, and provide a safe home. And that is essentially what we do as well, being that we are a ministry, we're a spiritual program, and we, we foster spiritual principles like honesty, open-minded willingness. Anybody who's willing to change will do the really difficult work that it takes to find recovery, and it is difficult. And we use many recovery-oriented programs such as Easter Seals, RHA, and Port. Port is huge. They go there every day for somewhere between a month and a half to three months, depending on, on what their needs are. So, we have a community partner also that helps our residents navigate the medical insurance market. And so, almost everybody right now has an insurance plan and is in therapy. I teach Yoga Weekly. Our care coordinator is a certified RAP facilitator. We bring in nutritionists, other people who teach healing movement classes, and clinicians. As I said, as a teacher, right, it's, everybody can learn a skill. And so, all that we're teaching them is self-discipline skills, like listening, following directions, all of these things that we missed when we were kids in, in homes that were not safe or supportive. So, I was 18 when I started drinking, and so, when I quit drinking, I realized quickly that I was dealing with normal life adult situations with the capacity of an 18-year-old. So, the men come in, and one of our guys right now, his mom offered him crack at nine, and continued to use heavy drugs into middle school and high school, and into adulthood. Many of our guys have suffered all the types of abuse, which leads them to, to deal with life at the capacity of a 10-year-old, 12-year-old. So, all of the work that we do is just helping them grow up and become more self-disciplined. And that is the surprising parallel between kids in foster care and the men and women who come into our homes. So, folk rehab, temp services, Volt, all of our guys are employed or very close to being employed right now. So, we have a very successful program. Let's head to the next slide. You've heard me say substance use disorder, alcohol use disorder, and the like. Studies show that that is very important to reduce the stigma and also for the treatment of the people who suffer from this chronic disease. The first, the one on the left, is saying that clinicians who were introduced to somebody as an addict or a substance abuser were treated very differently than the people presented to the clinician as somebody with substance use disorder. So, we say John is a person in recovery from drug addiction rather than John is an addict. It makes a difference. So, let's go to the next slide. One of the main areas of need is transportation. I am closely involved with RAI, which I think you all are familiar with, RAI. Very good. They have done some work on trying to help us get more transportation. It's really, really important that they be able to get to doctor's appointments. There's two of us. Right now, there is 12 of them. So, we definitely need help with transportation. Right now, we do not accept people on MAT, and that is people with opioid use disorder, using things like spoxone or methadone, not spoxone, right, methadone, and there's another one that I'm sorry, I don't know the name of right now. No one in our area accepts people using MAT. That will require us, if we were to provide it, some major training.
Excuse me?
For people, yes.
Repeat what MAT is, please.
Medical assisted treatment, medication-assisted treatment. Jasmine has come to present as our, at our board, to explain how vital it is for people with opioid use disorder to be able to have access to MAT to replace the opioid.
Okay.
Because when somebody is given the, the medication, like if they overdose, they go immediately into withdrawal. So, they, the, the brain chemistry, all of that stuff, the science supports MAT, creating success for people with opioid use disorder finding recovery. But nowhere around here supports people using that method. And also, main area of need is women. So, women, and they're, they're bidirectional in caregiving. Women, I think, you know, this is just my own experience, is that people want to help women more. And so, what happens, what I've seen in my experience is that people are just helping women into an early grave. They're like, here have this, here have that, here have that. And then, these, the women who have that, and the men too, enablers, maybe, you guys are familiar with that term, relapse at higher rates. So, we need a program where women do not have to depend on upward caregivers. And then, the other thing is the downward caregivers, where many women have children. So, it's, it's, women need recovery in different ways than men do. Our program works really well for men. We're still developing and need more support to find solutions for women, look for the caregiving issues. And so, I think there's two more slides. So, I've talked a lot about the risk, a lot about the risk, and the folks that we, that we help are also at potential. Step 12 is, having had a spiritual awakening as a result of these steps, we tried to carry this message to alcoholics and to practice the principles in all of our affairs. So, what makes me uniquely able to help people trying to recover is that I'm in recovery myself, and we keep on creating more people in recovery, helping more people in recovery. We're the best people to help. And I'm, I wish I had more time to, to share more successes, but one of our guys was living in a tent in Goldsboro, and one of our partners really helped him find us. And on Thanksgiving, he went to go serve the homeless in Goldsboro, and it was just really, really beautiful, full-circle type of success story. And that is, that is the end. There's one more slide with my contact information. And how am I doing on time? Do you have time for questions?
Yes, ma'am, you do. All right, first, let me say, before we turn it over to the board, thank you for your determination and sharing with us about your journey and, and what you're doing, and definitely, I echo to you on a personal basis, sorry to hear about your brother.
Thank you.
But we do thank you for your determination and trying to help others.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Laney, you're asking for support. So, I don't know if you are aware of this, but we do have Hope, and we have the Dicks Crisis Center. So, how do you fit in with them?
The Crisis Center often refers people to us. Most of our residents come from Dicks, but also Port Inahoski and Port in Washington. So, we don't often refer people to them. I, people, personal people will call me and say that my husband, my son, my daughter is having a problem, and I'll refer them to Mobile Crisis, who will in turn probably get them to Dicks or somewhere else in our, in our network.
Well, Dicks is short-term. You're a little bit longer than short-term.
Dicks is very short-term. Dicks is usually three days detox. So, that's, that's detox, that's step, step one, and then step one through 100 is what we do at RLM.
Where are you located?
My office is Broad Street Christian Church. The picture right here is the shed near my office, which we have recently put a mural on. It's not done, but Leahood is going to put historical figures on one side, and two of them are, are done. So, next time you see it, it's very colorful.
And your funding comes from where?
We have several funders. We have the H. Bates Foundation. They have been very generous, generous to us this year. Duke Health, Carolina East Foundation, Stubbs and Purdue, Warehouser, I just found out this morning, is giving us grant funding for transportation. We get all of the local grants.
Okay.
Commissioner Howard?
Okay, Denny answered my, asked my first one. The second part says, in your name, it says ministries. What does that entail like?
So, we are a spiritually-based program, but our spirituality comes from the 12 steps. So, it is a higher power of each person's understanding. I personally am Christian, but not everybody is, and not everybody comes in ready to embrace that. So, they have to have the flexibility to define spiritual terms for themselves, and we definitely give them the opportunity.
Okay.
I have a question. I heard you mention men, women, and children. Do you house these individuals, or is this a?
This is a long-term housing program, yes, ma'am.
Do you house all of them in the same facility?
We have a house that fits seven men, a house that fits five men, and then a house that will fit four women.
What about the children?
We do, we have not had any children in our program before. We're not set up for that yet. But we have had a woman with, pregnant before. That was interesting. Yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Laney, I think many of us in, on this board have experience with addiction in our families. I have double-decade sobriety, so I appreciate this. So, my question, and I would argue actually, in terms of some of the terminology, but that's what worked for me as opposed to someone else. What's the requirement for attendance at 12-step meetings, and what happens to the individuals in your programs if they fall out of the program? What's the responsibility and accountability for them?
Yes, ma'am. The requirement for AA or NA is daily and in-person, and that requirement stays that way the entire time. Our literature says six months to two years, but we have, we have the man who's been house manager for a while, he's been here for over three years. And he is, he's on an exit strategy, and he should be moving out within a couple of weeks. So, in one of the slides, I mentioned the check-in and self-discipline skills. So, they have a requirement to turn in, in daily logs, what they're learning at Port, SMART goals, S-M-A-R-T. Do we know about this? Okay. And so, they turn in paperwork on a weekly basis. They have one-on-one meetings with the care coordinator on a weekly basis, and she will assess their paperwork goals, et cetera, whether or not they're signing in, signing out, and going to all their stuff. So, should somebody not turn in their paperwork on time, they get something called a check-in, and that just explains which rule they didn't follow. We only have three. And what was going on at the time, and then what self-discipline skills need to be, so, right.
I'm asking about relapse.
Right. Oh, gosh, if that's your.
Okay, if somebody relapses, what happens?
Three rules, three zero tolerance policies. And if somebody relapses in the house, it's immediate dismissal. And then, just like little, you know, little slips, little slides, not telling the truth about something, not going to a meeting every day, that's something that we monitor on a continuous basis so that it, it avoids these little slips turning into big relapses. Did that, did that answer your question?
Now, my question, my question was very simple. If you relapse, are you gone?
Oh, yes.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to know.
Absolutely. Zero tolerance.
Any other questions?
I did have one, I didn't. Go ahead, Miss B.
Excuse me. My question was very simple, very much like Ms. Mitchell's, but wouldn't an addict be prone to relapse? I mean, if you, if first time they're gone, how many people are you saving? Because if they're really addicted, whether it's alcohol or drugs, now, I, I don't really know, but I'm told they're likely to relapse.
Relapse is part of the process for many people. When somebody is ready, somebody is ready, and they will sustain recovery with support and with the development of the spiritual principles, with development of self-discipline skills, essentially, and being supported into being an adult, living life on life's terms. So...
Is that a permanent, is it permanent?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like, years later, can they come back and try again, or is that, yes?
So, once they get out. If they, if they relapse and, and go out, they have, and there's an appeal process that they can go through. It hasn't happened very often. Since I've been here, there's only been two relapses in the house. Many of our people are still in recovery. A couple of people, you know, who are, they're, they're difficult people. They are difficult people. People with personality disorders are really hard to help. So, did that answer your question? Relapse is part of it.
I understand.
But when people are ready, people are ready. I mean, I, I, I came in, I stayed in. I haven't had a relapse. Relapse isn't part of my story since coming into the program.
Everybody's story is not the same.
Correct.
Everybody's pressures are not the same. And, and I accept what you do is part of your program, but I just, I just have compassion to think, I wouldn't accept a person over and over again.
Oh, gosh, we have.
But I would think that, you know, if a person is sincere and relapsed one time, I thought that makes big consideration, but I don't.
Commissioner Howard?
I, I forgot to ask one question. That was about, you know, when I, when I give to a charity, I always ask this question, like, what is the percentage that goes to your service versus all the other costs? Like, do you guys have that kind of figured out, or no?
Our budget last year was about $150,000, and about $100,000 of that was for housing. The two, right, last year was two houses. We've just expanded our program to three houses last week. So, the majority.
Any other questions from the board? We do have Ms. Jasmine Kennedy here with us, our opioid prevention coordinator. Jasmine, you won't come and say anything, give us any updates. You don't have to, but we rarely get you in that room, so I want to give you the opportunity if you want to. And you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you've got anything to share with us, we'd love to hear from you. All right.
Thank you again so much.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
I couldn't decline the invitation, so thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. We've just been working hard with, collaborating with our partnerships, trying to raise the awareness as we are in a pivotal time of the opioid epidemic, where you are starting to hear medication-assisted treatment more as the overdoses keep piling up, piling up, as medication seems to be the cure, as if, just like an antibiotic is for an infection. So, we've just been working hard with raising the awareness, trying to prepare for plans on the opioid settlement funds. We're back in the schools, we're back in the communities now. So, definitely, it's in a, the program itself is definitely in a different place than it was a year ago, when COVID was still kind of holding us back from the community. So, we're definitely proud and thankful to be creating those relationships with the community and as well as our partnerships.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jasmine? As always, thank you for what you do. We appreciate it. And, and we also, this morning, want to thank Ms. White. We thank you for being here in attendance and sharing with us about your program. All right, Commissioners, we, next on the agenda is a Religious Community Services presentation. We're honored today to have Mr. Zeb Huff once again with us. Good eve, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, just point for the future for you guys. I'm going to say thank you and all that stuff. But it was intimidating enough to follow Laney White, and then you invited Jasmine up? How do I follow both of those ladies? In any case, good morning, Commissioners, staff, and community. I hope you find yourself well and healthy, avoiding the flu that seems to be chasing me around like the plague. But this morning, I've come to present on two things. First, on behalf of the board, the staff, volunteers, and the guests at RCS, thank you. We owe a heartfelt thanks to this county commissioners' board, as it is the only municipal body that supports our organization in three counties, multiple cities, and multiple townships. Craven County has remained a steadfast advocate and partner, supporting the mission of RCS to meet need where it is needed the most. And we thank you for this. RCS understands that it is not always easy to prioritize the marginalized population and the services that it takes to fight poverty. I'm hopeful that your continued example will spur others on to do the same as we work to make the quality of life for all citizens in these communities a priority. Again, we thank you. The second thing I wish to address this morning is the impact you are making through RCS. It's one thing to say thanks for chipping in, but I believe commitment like yours demands accountability, the accountability of answering the question, what difference are we actually making? The accountability of answering the question, what difference are we actually making? For some numbers, so far in the last 12-month period, RCS has provided 11,000 nights of shelter, including, including 6,159 guests in the crisis shelter, 3,157 in our family shelter, and 1,776 participants in our veteran services program. In our, in our pantry, our emergency, uh, food assistance, we have filled 91,696 emergency food orders. This is triple from our previous year and a marked, and the marked difference is because of the work that we do in the outpost program that you all supported la, uh, this past year, where we go to rural, uh, locations to provide services. Moreover, our community kitchen has provided 94,520 meals. We've spent almost $60,000 in written utility assistance and, and purchased 1,283 Craven, uh, carts. I was gonna say Craven area rural transportation systems, but that's a mouthful, so.
Carts.
Carts. Carts. We have helped 144 patients treat, uh, have been treated in our medical clinic and 440 total case management cases have been opened and closed this past year. We've had 227, uh, 227 community referrals to us from partnerships. And all of this was made possible because of 142,783 volunteer hours provided to the organization. Now, if those numbers kind of whizzed over your head as they do most people, let me make the impact even clearer. This county, you all, have invested $30,000 in, in the operation of the shelter services at RCS. According to the National Alliance to End Homelessness, a person experiencing chronic homelessness costs the taxpayer on average of $35,000 per year, per person. That cost is made up of $95.89 a night for shelter provided in communities where services like ours are not available, making the sheltering services provided by RCS in 2021 valued at just under $700,000. Juxtapose that with what we actually spent to provide case management, shelter services, shelter prevention services and wraparound services. Our actual expense was $286,000, which amounts to about $25 per night, per person. That includes not only shelter over their head, but also a hot shower, a warm meal, a safe and dignified place to sleep and access to the entire network of our community partners. That's less than half of what it would cost for a municipal body to operate a shelter of similar size and capacity. Those are dollars saved by the taxpayer because of the services rendered. As you can see by this simple example, the homelessness prevention and housing services of RCS that RCS has provided for over 40 years are crucial to our community and essential to continue success. Since its inception, RCS has relied on community partners as critical allies in our fight against poverty. Together, we have worked for the benefit of our neighbors experiencing homelessness, unemployment, food insecurities and a lack of social support, critical to building a self-sufficient life. In the wake of natural disasters, a worldwide pandemic and economic uncertainty, the demand for our work has only increased. And in our community, we have always risen to the occasion that the demand requires. Before I go, let me leave you with this. Not all of us are blessed with the good fortune to wake up with, uh, wake up in our own bed, under our own roof. Most of us in this room have struggled through our own lives, uh, through our own storms in life. And in those moments of darkness, we've had to rely on whatever community we could scrounge up around us to dig ourselves out. Thanks to your investment in RCS, people don't have to look very far. At RCS, we build supportive communities, we engage people holistically and we empower permanent life change. I don't actually have to read this part because I lived it very recently. This last week, I was giving a tour of our facility. I had no idea who this lady was. She just walked in the door and she said, can I get a tour? This place has changed a lot since the last time I was here. I wasn't doing much, wink, wink. So I decided to give her a tour. In the course of our tour, I found out that the woman I was giving a tour to was actually a shelter, uh, a shelter guest 10 years ago in RCS's shelter. She was seeing the new parts of the shelter and at the end of the tour, she turned to me and she gave me a check for $1,000. And she said, this is my give-back check. Do me a favor and help someone change their lives the same way you guys helped me change mine. When someone hands me $1,000, I make time to hear their story. And so I asked her hers. Turns out 10 years ago, she moved to New Bern and she came with two children, a husband struggling with addiction that she didn't know about. And they found themselves in a predicament that they could have never forecasted when they moved here from Maryland. They stayed in our shelter. Now, many of you who know anything about RCS's shelter will know that 10 years ago, we didn't have our fancy family residence that we have today. So 10 years ago, I might be telling on one of my past colleagues here, but they turned an office into a family residence. And this family lived there for about six months. 10 years later, because of the services of RCS, because of the community that they were able to find in this area, they now are not only in a position where they're surviving outside of our, uh, outside of our services, they find themselves living in a community where they're able to give back. I would love to say that this is the exception and we're gonna work harder to find it. What we find is this is the rule. When people like you and me are given the opportunity to change, given the resources to do and given the expectation to follow through on that, they rise to the occasion, just like our community does. Once again, folks, I want to say thank you for your continued support. Keep being the example that this community needs. And, uh, at this time, I will take any questions you may have.
Questions from the board?
I have one.
Commissioner Hunt.
So, um, I've only been aware of RCS for about the last 30 of the last 40 years. And I know that your group, your organization has always done a phenomenal job all over Craven County and other areas as well. I'm just curious to know, when you said that, um, you've increased the emergency food assistance program three times and you've extended it to rural areas, what rural areas are you talking about specifically?
Absolutely. So Operation Outpost was a initiative that we launched in March of 2021, uh, where we actually take all of our services that we have in-house, our, uh, emergency, temporary emergency assistance services, along with food services, out to places like, uh, Bridgeton, Havelock, Arlo, Alliance. Uh, we're still looking for a partner in Dover, I haven't forgotten. Um, we've gone to Vanceboro and two other places that are escaping me. I, I should have, I should have shaved this morning. I can retain more when there's no hair on my head or something, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, basically, we, we load up the box truck on Tuesday nights and we go out to these, uh, to these places to basically take RCS, uh, from George Street and extend those services to where our clients are. It was an initiative born out of COVID. We found out very quickly that people just simply couldn't get to our facility on George Street. And so instead of expecting people to come to us, we went to them. And it has been, uh, it has proven itself over and over again. Absolutely.
Commissioner Mark.
Uh, you mentioned that Craven County is your one contributor. What about the other counties such as Clotaret County and Pamlico County?
Uh huh. Uh, so our, our, our service area currently is Jones County, Pamlico County and Craven County. Um, and I am working diligently and, and touting your praises everywhere I go, uh, because you are the example. Uh, the, the truth is, uh, the, the savings that we, the, that we are able to perpetuate in Craven County uh, would be, would be a great help in some of these more impoverished counties if, if they would take the leap and follow your example. Uh, so we haven't gotten a, a commitment yet, but we've had lots and lots of conversation and I anticipate a lot more.
Zeb.
Yes.
During the pandemic, a lot of people found themselves out of jobs, um, in crisis maybe that they hadn't experienced. Since now we can find help wanted signs everywhere. Have you seen a decline in the number of people that show up for daily meals, for, uh, housing? Or has it stayed full tilt like it was during the pandemic?
Uh, uh, different than, than both of those options. We've increased. Uh, during the pan, uh, pandemic, our community kitchen, uh, would probably see on average, especially in cold, uh, on cold days, probably 60, uh, between 40 and 60 individuals come through for a meal. Uh, and those were the individuals who wanted to brave the cold to come and get a meal at the community kitchen. Uh, yesterday, we served 143, uh, in, in the community kitchen. Uh, when, when I came in 2020, uh, I went around pretty, uh, pretty boldly saying, we never turn anyone away from our shelter. Uh, in 2022, uh, our, uh, the men's dorm, uh, probably experienced a combined 43 days where it wasn't at capacity. Um, and so we had to find, we had to find options that were outside our shelter constantly. Uh, so the, we've never, in 40 years of records, we've never seen demand like, like we have across the full spectrum of our services that we provide. Um, and the, the reasons are, it, it's multifaceted. It's not, uh, it's not a, it's not, there's no simple silver bullet that, that we can shoot at the problem, um, because it's, it's multifaceted. We, we see mental health, uh, mental health being a huge contributor to, to, to the problem. Inflation, I mean, economic uncertainty, the whole nine yards.
I guess my concern is that as I speak to local business owners, restaurants and others that have what we would call entry-level jobs that don't require a lot of skill, but just require, um, I like what the director of the community college says, uh, show up, shut up and stay until you're done. Uh, that's what he tells people they need to do in a job and it, it's really true. But the restaurants, some of them are closing, um, more than they were before because they can't get people to work. Um, the, uh, other businesses that, uh, contractors, et cetera, can't get labor. I'm not talking skilled necessarily, but just people to show up and do the, the general heavy lifting that needs to be done in so many businesses. And it's concerning that, that we have all those needs, yet we have overcapacity at people saying, I need a place to sleep. And I understand it's, it's complicated. I'm, I'm not, but.
Sure, no.
I would, I would certainly hope that we would see, um, some change as we go down into '23.
Absolutely. I, indicative of what you, uh, of what you just described is the, the essential problems of systemic change that needs to take place. If my rent is $2,800 per month, uh, and I work, uh, I work over at the Chelsea for the generous wage that Chris will give me, uh, and I can just make rent, but I can't buy food, uh, not many of us are gonna take that deal.
Sure.
Uh, and so we're, we're constantly trying to develop people and trying to develop skill sets. Uh, the Bolt Center, great partner, trade school, um, uh, trying to get, get individuals not just into entry-level jobs, but into, into, into skilled la, into the skilled labor force, uh, so that they can earn a livable wage, so that they can afford, uh, the cost of living that all of us live under the burden of.
All right, any other question?
Yeah. Uh, Zeb, you mentioned that there were other counties besides Craven County and we are, you're, one of your biggest contributors. I'm not looking for an answer today, but can you give it some thought on how us as commissioners can help you get these other counties to give money?
I will definitely give that some thought and take you up on that offer.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Zeb, we thank you. Appreciate you coming before us today.
Always a pleasure.
Yes, sir. All right, Commissioners, under Departmental Matters, the first item we have with us is Sheriff Chip Hughes with the Governor's Crime Commission Grant. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff. Morning Commissioners, uh, this morning I've come before you for, uh, we were awarded a grant in the amount of $20,723.42 in Governor's Crime Commission. These funds will be used to promote safety and security within the Craven County detention facility and my investigative lab. It's gonna provide us with, uh, some safety equipment as well as cameras that we need to cover some of the areas that aren't covered by existing cameras within our confinement facility.
Any questions before, before the sheriff, before we take the motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $20,724. Any further discussion on the motion? Here or none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sim?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Sheriff, you have anything to share with us this morning?
Um, just a couple of things. We've got a, uh, Christmas parade in, uh, Carolina, Fines, this evening, which, uh, they always have a very good turnout. So we're looking forward to that. I'll be with Commissioner, uh, Howard. And, uh, we expect there'll be a lot of kids there as well. Uh, all the other Christmas parades have gone really well, a lot of excitement throughout our county. Uh, our folks did some trash pickup this, uh, weekend with Commissioner Hunt. Thank you for the invitation and putting that together. Uh, and we will, we will extend that to, to all the Commissioners as it's a program that we together have, have put in place for our inmates come out and clean up, uh, our roadways. The only thing we aren't concentrating on right now are the major thoroughfares. So we do try to keep it to secondary routes and we're hoping that DOT will step up and clean up US 70 like they should be. Um, another thing on the grants, just wanted to let you know, uh, this was also another non-matching grant that we received. And since 2021, we have brought in over $1.5 million, uh, only one of which has been matching and that was in the amount of just a little over $4,000 that we asked y'all to match for bulletproof vests for my deputies. So we have, uh, my staff has done a phenomenal job at looking out there at what grants are available, applying for them. And we've been very successful, even though none of them are grant writers. So, uh, they have other jobs, but they do this in addition to, so that's all I've got, sir.
Any questions for the sheriff and the Commissioners? Merry Christmas to you, sir.
Same to you.
All right, item five is recreation. Mr. Billy Wilks, our Recreation Parks Director. We have two items this morning. The first one is the acceptance of the PARTF grant for the development of a new nature park. Good morning, sir.
Good morning to all of you. I'm Billy Wilks, the Recreation and Parks Director. Um, and we do have two items, as you mentioned. The first one is our PARTIF acceptance. And back in December of 2021, we brought before the Commissioners an opportunity to, um, go after a PARTIF grant and to, to, to have a new nature park, which I think we're gonna have a few pictures coming up in just a minute that you guys can look at. So the Parks and Rec, uh, Trust Fund is the PARTIF grant that we were gonna apply for, which we did and we were successful with. So we applied, uh, the first part of the year, turned it in in May, um, and the grant was successful for $500,000. Um, and that is to develop this land, this piece of land that we're talking about in, in your Departmental Matters. And it is 172 acre parcel of land. Uh, the North Carolina Coastal Land Trust purchased the land. So you've got three pieces of property, all total 172, awesome piece of property, by the way. It has hills and undulations, not as flat as you're used to seeing around, uh, Craven County for sure. So I'm really excited. There's a couple of pictures up there of the, the nature, new nature park, which we've gotta come up with a name for. Craven County Nature Park. We, we gotta find something to name that thing. Um, so we're excited about the opportunity to develop it into. So, we're excited about the opportunity to develop it into a nature based park for walking, for biking, also has kayaking possibilities as there's water access on Brysis Creek. One of the cool things about this property is it, you can take a kayak and go from Creekside Park to this piece of property in about six miles. So, you can kind of put in at one location and get out at the other. And so, that'll be two parks that we manage. And you can see some of the things that happen. So, the land trust is going to deed the property over to us. It was approximately valued at around two million dollars. We then got the Partif grant for five hundred thousand, and we needed to come up with a hundred thousand. And thankfully, Bass Pro Shops was coming in about that time, and they agreed to provide us with the hundred thousand dollars that we needed to start this process. So, basically, what we're asking for today is for acceptance of the Partif grant or Parks and Rec Trust Fund grant, and then the chairman's signature. And then, we're going to look to proceed with that project, which will take about three years. And Steve, you can switch to the next slide if you want. There you go, you've got the signature today, hopefully. The land trust to deed the property over in the spring of 2023. We anticipate that happening in May. We'll begin meeting with contractors in the early part of the year because we want to be ready to hit the ground running in the summer of 2023. We anticipate about a year is about how long it'll take us to develop this park. The park will have, as I mentioned, walking trails, biking trails. It'll also have a picnic shelter, restroom facilities. We'll have a creek walk, which we want to make a natural creek walk, which will be beautiful on this piece of property as well. And the location is, you know, it's really in a population base that's huge. So, it's close to Evans Mill subdivision, and it borders both County Line Road and Old Airport Road. So, I'll take, I guess.
All right, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, based on the success of the nature park at Broad Creek Road, I would highly make a motion to accept this.
All right, we have a motion. And a second to accept the five hundred thousand dollar grant and authorize the chairman to sign the grant agreement discussion.
Billy, if I could go first. Billy, this is exciting. Where would the parking be across from Blue Water Rise entrance? Is that where you're visualizing the parking?
We anticipate two parking areas. One would be exactly where you said, just on the other side of the bridge, going towards the Blue Water Rise subdivision. That would be the parking for probably what is a small bike trail that will kind of loop that side of the property, and also the kayak access as well would be in that location. On County Line Road, we anticipate having a parking lot. Now, this is subject to getting everything approved, but, and that would be for the walking or hiking aspect of the park. And we're looking at a five K walk, you know, three point one mile variety because it's such a substantial piece of property. That way, we can do trail runs and folks can walk and just have smaller trails that sort of intermix with that bigger trail. Yes, ma'am?
One of the questions that I get from people moving into this area, or my area in particular, is they're having issue with signage finding places.
Yes.
Because we know where it is, but signs are not necessarily easily visible. So, my question is, what are your plans to make identification and signage easily visible?
I hear you. And that one is a little bit difficult to get to. So, we would hopefully, first of all, be able to work with DOT a little bit, which we did with the Latham Whitehurst Nature Park. So, we now have signage on fifty-five and also on Broad Creek Road to go to the nature park. So, if we are able to make that happen, that would be the first priority. And so, you'd have a sign actually coming off the highway where you, where it would point towards the nature park. We have that for two of our parks. We haven't gotten that yet for West Craven Park, but that would be the first hope. And then, of course, signage at the actual facility as well, and the site we would have at both parking areas as well is what our anticipated usage is. Yes?
Well, if we're going to put this amount of money in tax dollars into a park, I would hope that this board would work very strongly with DOT since we have two local representatives that we could reach out and touch to make that happen because to me, that's critical.
Yeah, I agree. And actually, just in the last year, we've done that at Latham because we were having the same type of thing where folks weren't able to see our signage as well. So, we were able to make that happen thanks to, and we actually worked with Stephen in solid ways to make that happen. So, it was just a good communication with those guys. So, we'll try as best we can.
To me, I'm going to be real honest. This is not a try issue. We've got Mary Jo Alcoke, we've got General Hugh Overholt, who live right in our area within ten miles. We've got to reach out and do that.
We will.
It's an investment.
Commissioner Howard?
And I talked to Gene before the meeting a little bit about this, and I had some questions about some of the historical sites in the area.
Sure.
Will there be signage for that, like any observation of like when we're building that?
Yeah, because there is. We actually have talked to, and there's some Evans Mill history that is on this site. So, we'll be working, there's two gentlemen that we've talked to sort of to start the process with that, and that is part of what we put into our Partif grant, was to discuss that, but also to find a way to work with them to make that happen. Yes, sir, that's going to be a part of our process as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hunt?
I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for pulling all this together. I personally have been out there, both on my gravel bike and running all through those twenty-seven acres. So, my friends and I are super excited that this is coming together for everyone to utilize.
Yeah, I think the, one of the things, we hear a lot about trails and the need for trails, but we don't have, in our system anyway, a place where you can ride your bicycle or have a bicycle trail, which are more narrow trails. So, we are going to be intentional about making that happen in this park, so.
Any additional questions from the board? Discussion. All right, we do have a motion on the floor to accept the grant and authorize signature. Here no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Okay, second, and you can go ahead, Steve, if you want to switch to the next. Nope, there's the question thing. Yep, there you go. So, our next one is a request to go after a North Carolina Beach and Waterfront Access Grant. And that would be at the start of 2023, or at least that process would be at the start of 2023. So, in 2021, we finished a grant from the North Carolina Beach and Waterfront Access Grant Funds to essentially redo the waterfront dock at Creekside Park. And I don't know if you've seen it, but there's a picture of it right there. So, it's beautiful. We basically reboarded everything, which it was original to the park. So, that was about nineteen ninety-seven when we opened, so it was time. And so, we reboarded everything. We added fishing cutouts, which you can see the closest to you is one of the two fishing cutouts we have out there. We added a new kayak access as well out at Creekside, and this is being used, I mean, unbelievably, just a huge amount of usage at this site. And we've seen it continue to grow, especially through the pandemic. And so, you can see we did that project with an eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollar grant from the North Carolina Beach and Waterfront Access Fund, which the county so graciously provided us with a match for twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Prices skyrocketed for our wood during that period, and we had to go after another small grant, seventy-two hundred dollars from the Harold Bay Foundation to finish this off. However, there is one piece of this puzzle that was not finished in that grant, and you're going to go to the next slide for me, Steve, and I'll show you what that is. Okay, so, at the far end of that picture, you see, well, you see the new kayak launch, which is right in front of you there. That's substantial, and it does provide access. But the one on the far side, which is the one that should be accessible, does not really provide the level of accessibility we would hope. So, it does have the aluminum walkway down to it, and then you are allowed to kayak off of that. But we want to provide, that is original to the park. And we want to provide an easy dock system in the next slide, Steve, that will show you kind of what I'm talking about here, that provides handrails. And much like you'll see at a lot of park sites, provides handrails and access, and it just makes it so much easier to get in and out of. And here's the numbers, what we're thinking anyway. I did have it priced this year, so, and I've increased it about ten percent, you know, or so. And our expectation will be about thirty-five thousand dollars for this kayak launch. We would like to go after the grant, which would be a seventy-five twenty-five grant. The match would cost Craven County eighty-seven fifty, and I'm just looking for permission to start that process. So, the February would be the pre-application deadline, and then we would work, it takes a year long process to go through any state grants. And so, it would take us a while as we go through that process, and we would find out towards the end of 2023 whether or not we were accepted for the grant. The existing kayak launch, we could reuse at one of two sites. It could either be reused at Latham Whitehurst Nature Park or potentially in the new park site as well. There's two, we have lots of needs right now, and that would fit into one of those park sites.
All right, any questions?
I would agree with ET about the signage. And I want to congratulate Billy and his staff because they have updated all of our parks, which I think makes a big difference on economic future for us and also bringing people to the county.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I'm not a kayaker, so what I'm about to ask may not make good sense. However, if you launch here and kayak up the river, should there not be someplace that you could get off the water down the river somewhere?
Yeah, there are, this is actually, Creekside Park is the middle spot for, you can go six miles either way. One way, you would end up at our new nature park. The other way, you'd end up at Lawson Creek Park. So, you have, and there's some various put-ins, like you can go to, you can actually get off at Merchant's Grocery Store, which is about a three mile ride. So, there's different little spots that you can kind of get off along the way. And we actually, on our website, have about sixty-four trails that we worked with the Twin Rivers Paddle Club, and it shows you put-in and drop-off locations all throughout Craven County. So, this one has several spots because it's so central. So, it is a good spot to launch at Creekside because you can go either way.
Now, on your website, do you have directions to get to the park?
Yes, ma'am. Every park has directions on it as well. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, here no further questions. What's the desire of the board in applying for this grant?
Making a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to apply for the grant application for the accessible kayak launch at Creekside Park. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Billy.
Merry Christmas.
Appreciate it. Merry Christmas to you, sir. Next item this morning, we have subdivision for approval. Mr. Hickory Run at River Trace Phase One Final. Mr. Don Bumgarth. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Planning Board met and reviewed this subdivision back on December eighth and did recommend it for final approval. The property itself, Hickory Run at River Trace Phase One, is owned by Brysis Creek Mini Storage. The surveying and engineering was done by Avalos Engineers. The property is located in Township Seven, and it is off of Wild Turkey Road. It's basically at the end of the roadway itself. It's been extended. The subdivision contains thirteen lots on approximately five point six acres, and the lots are proposed to be served by the county's water system and individual septic systems. In order for this subdivision to move forward, a vote by the board would be needed.
All right, Vice Chair Booker, this is in your district. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do have a question or two. Don?
Yes, sir.
The access to get to the subdivision is off of Brysis Creek Road.
Correct.
Correct. And it's adding thirteen lots to what presently, I don't know how many lots are in there now, but there's been quite a bit of addition in the last couple of years. I've had some people who are concerned about getting out onto Brysis Creek Road. There's only one way in and out at this point, correct?
Correct.
When the Planning Board considers something like this new subdivision, do they consider ingress and egress as part of the plan? Or is that something they don't look at?
Well, normally, they do try to look at that. Most of the time, in the residential subdivisions, the traffic speeds are relatively low. The issues really become where you access the state road. This is a, basically, a subdivision that's going to be phased. If you can see on some of the information that I might have sent to each of you, it shows actually a larger piece of property.
Yep.
It ends up going all the way over to, what's the name, Prunk Farm Road. So, as a result of it, you know, we haven't actually seen the overall master plan yet, but there is a possibility that that roadway could be extended all the way across. I'm not sure whether that was discussed when the developer came in, but I do know that that's something that staff has been looking at.
This is, this property is, if I have my orientation correct, part of the Haynes Farm property.
Yes, sir.
So, I think we can assume that more of that, since Ted Haynes passed away, and I understand that a number of people now own pieces of this, what was the Haynes Farm.
Yes.
It's been, it's been, the word, I guess, in his will, he gave it to like fifteen or twenty different parcels of that couple of hundred acres. And those people are probably going to want to do the same thing. So, I think, I just think that it's important that as the planning folks look at this, that they look at, hey, how are people going to get in and out of here? Because getting out onto Brysis Creek Road, I'm told, during rush time, is getting more and more challenging.
Right.
So, and that's the only way to get out, basically. You can either go to Pollocksville, or you can come our way, and that's the only two choices you have. So, I just wanted to pass that on, that we need to, I think, as we continue to see more and more development off of Brysis Creek Road, say, how do these folks get in and out safely? That's the concern.
Just to add to your concern, is the one road is also prone to flooding.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is the one road in and out is also prone to flooding, right? Some of the bigger storms are now.
Brysis Creek Road, only during a major, major storm.
Okay.
That was at the opposite end of the road, in Pollocksville, and they changed that bridge.
Most of the time, you don't really want to be out when the road is flooding that bad. Conditions are normally very unsuitable for travel.
Yeah, I think just the bigger concern is the number of houses being built that have to use Brysis Creek Road. That's a state road, not our concern specifically, but we need to, I think we need to look as we go down the road if we continue to see all these rural areas developed with that one road being the only way in and out is a concern.
Yes, sir.
All right, additional questions? I do see on here, the road will be paved.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. All right, additional questions? Here none, do we, what's the desire of the board in approval for the subdivision?
I recommend we approve it.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve the Hickory Run at River Trace Phase One Final. Is any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item seven, we have Health Department, the three forty B pharmacy fees. Ms. Jennifer Blackman, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Blackman, the Deputy Director, Nursing Director at the Health Department for our new Commissioners. We had the pleasure of completing our three forty B pharmacy construction, so now, we need to set some fees for dispensing our medications. With the list that I tried to compile it to make it as explanatory as possible, being part of a three forty B program, we can only charge acquisition costs for the medications because they're extremely discounted drugs. So, on this list here, if you'll see the quantity of pills, so, how we make our money for our revenues is based off of a dispensing fee. That is different than what the actual cost of the drug was. So, for a quantity, this is for generic drugs that we get, and this is most common that we try to stock as a generic. However, there's sometimes we can't purchase a generic drug, it has to be a name brand. But for zero to thirty tablets, it would cost someone, for example, say, I paid that month for an antibiotic, twenty-eight cent for that bottle. So, if I need to give a patient thirty pills of that antibiotic, it would be four dollars and twenty-eight cent is what the fee would be. So, the fees that we're asking today are for dispensing fees plus the cost of acquisition. And those acquisition costs can change. They change quarterly, they change monthly depending on the drug and the cost of the drug. So, those can always vary, but the dispensing fee will stay the same. So those can always vary, but the dispensing fee will stay the same. It goes down the list, you can see from thirty-one to forty-five tablets, a dispensing fee would be five dollars. So the higher you go along with more of the medication tablets, the higher the dispensing fee. We then go down to the name brand drugs for 340B and those costs are a little bit higher because name brand drugs are more expensive. So zero to fifteen tablets, dispensing fee would be fifteen dollars, sixteen to thirty tablets, it would be twenty, and so on. On the back of this, we also had to establish usual and customary charges for Medicaid insurance. So right now Medicaid will reimburse thirteen dollars, so that's where we got that fee from. There's two, there's several types of Medicaid in the state of North Carolina. Regular Medicaid typically for the children and for those with behavioral health type Medicaid, that's where the thirteen dollars comes in. For those smaller Medicaid managed care plans, ten dollars and twenty-four cents. So that would be based upon the type of insurance they have as to what their fee will be charged. But those are the usual and customary charges. The last fee is for staff completing patient assistance forms. Those forms have always been very time consuming. Those have been for patients that were unable to afford a drug. We would fill out sometimes thirty pages for, if it's a drug company that's doing the patient assistance fees. So we wanted to kind of deter patients from relying on patient assistance instead of using the pharmacy. So with that, we're going to set a fee of ten dollars if that's allowable. But I do want to make one thing clear before I take any questions, you know, some of these fees, if we have patients that still cannot meet the fees for these drugs, we have patient assistance programs, we work with Carolina East, we get those patients enrolled in those patient assistance programs. So basically, Carolina East pays us, you know, the example of the four dollar and twenty-eight cent, if someone couldn't afford that, they would pay us that. We also have programs within the Health Department itself that cover those patients that, who can't afford to even pay for their primary care visit. So if we have any patients that are from RCS or any of those homeless shelters, we don't charge them. We have some money in the foundation to pay for that.
All right, any questions?
Making a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Okay.
All right, discussion, Commissioner Mitchell.
Um, you're, I think this is a huge step forward for the county. My question is, I'm seeing pills, little round things. What, do y'all provide diabetic management services?
Yes, we do.
Okay, insulin?
Yes.
All of the stuff and how, how is that going to be dispensed?
Right, so I will be coming back with some different fees.
Okay.
Because we've had to be credentialed with the insurance payers, just like we would for a medical visit. You have to be registered with Blue Cross and EDN and all those different private insurance policies. It's just taken us a little bit, so we haven't got, we're almost there with that. I think we had to send in some proof of our liability insurance and things like that. But for, it's going to basically be around the same thing, the acquisition cost plus the small dispensing fee, because we're able to get insulin for twenty-eight cent a vial. So it'll be whatever that fee's going to be set at when we talk to the board next month and then we'll be coming back to you guys.
Okay, so this is phase one, step one?
This is phase one for us to be able to get started.
Yes ma'am.
Yep.
Okay, additional questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes sir.
I don't know, I maybe put Jennifer on the spot, but I visited a pharmacy a couple weeks ago and talked with Mr. Harrelson and he was already describing a scenario where an individual had received a prescription they could not afford. Jen, could, is there any way you could articulate that the best you can?
So this particular patient, let me give you a little background so you understand the medicine that they're on. It was a younger lady who had a baby at Carolina East. She had some complications to where she had to be put on a blood thinner. Based on her age and I don't know if it was things that she was doing when she was breastfeeding or whatever, the provider wanted her to be on Zoralto, which is a name brand, expensive blood thinning drug versus Coumanen. So the hospital contacted us because their patient assistance program right now is they do three, medication assistance is three hundred dollars a person because they help a lot of patients. So they have a cap for prescription medications of three hundred dollars. This particular drug was eleven hundred dollars. So even with their three hundred, the patient couldn't afford it. When we looked it up over at our facility, it was less than two dollars for that same exact drug. So that patient was uninsured, she had already come to us for maternity care. So for that particular person, we got her in our primary care clinic, we saw her as a ER follow-up and we were able to get her that medication that she needed.
Additional questions? Here none, all those in favor of approving the 340B pharmacy fees, if you will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Next item is Economic Development Recommendations for Engineering and Planning Services, Mr. Jeff Wood. Good morning sir.
Good morning sir. Good morning Commissioners. I have to bring something to you this morning, as you heard in the consent agenda, next board meeting, we'll have a public hearing to sell twelve acres of property approximately. That's on the southern part of the park and so if you think the big BSH building, we've basically ran out of property on that side, so that's good news. We have lot nine and ten that's left on the northern side of the property, or of the park. It's about fifty acres, that's about what we've sold over the last four years on the southern side of the park. It needs to be surveyed out, it needs to have some technical work done on it. So we put together an RFQ with finance, received seven engineering firms, very well qualified. It was an extensive process, Chad from planning helped me with the review of those. We narrowed it down to three and interviewed those and come to you today to ask for recommendation for the county manager and the department to be able to negotiate with Vaughn Milton. While there were very strong qualities of all the candidates, they seem to have an understanding of some of the obstacles that we're going to have when they come to this property, particularly that there's a transmission line that goes in front of the property, which we all know if that needs to be moved, that's going to be costly. They have an understanding of that, that, they brought that up during the interview process, that was kind of distinguishing difference between them and all the other firms. Our hope is, is that we'll break this property up, similar to what we've done with lot nineteen on the southern side of the park, so that we can continue to sell off lots roughly in six to ten acre increments, depending on what their recommendations are. Another opportunity slash issue that we'll look at is, is the back part of lot nine and ten has rail and so do we want to utilize that or not? We have tried to market that property as rail-served unsuccessfully for several years, whereas breaking up properties in the park has been more successful. So, if you have any questions, ask for the recommendation.
Questions from the board? Here none, do we have a motion?
Some more.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, and this is to allow the county manager, Economic Development Department to enter negotiations with Vaughn Milton for a service contract. Here no further discussion from the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you sir. Commissioners, next we have appointments. First we have pending, Commissioners, there, it was, we failed to be able to put into your agenda packets an applicant that it was just overlooked for the Coastal Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. We've had Mr. Billy Roy Joyner, who has been, had an application in for the past year to serve on this. We do have a vacancy. I will just attest to you that Mr. Joyner, as a municipal member, he does attend all the meetings. He does not have a vote, but he does enter into discussion as a municipal member. So he is aware of the activities of the landfill. I would like to ask that he be considered for appointment to this board today.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, now, that's in place of Fogelman?
Correct.
Mr. Fogelman is allowed to serve until June.
Okay, so you want to become effective?
I believe that, I think that, I discussed that with the county manager.
That's when he would turn him out, but the appointment is due now. It's, it's one of these where when you read through the bottom holes, you can't be appointed to new terms and we can see that, but he does have some, he does have some time that he can serve.
So, so are you asking that?
Well, I'm asking that he be allowed to serve until, until June, which is what I told him.
Basically defer to him until June.
So Mr. Joyner would not become effective until, his appointment until June?
The board's called, but I think that's what.
Okay, is that a consensus or?
Yeah, could we amend the motion to appoint Mr. Joyner, or Commissioner Joyner now and let him affect in June?
June, June one?
Second.
Okay, all right, you've heard the nomination, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we will accept Mr. Joyner by acclamation, all right, thank you. All right, you, you have also there on the pending, you see the other ones, does anybody have any applications for any of those today?
Well, for voluntary agricultural board, I approve Timothy Rhodes.
Okay, that is under current, so we'll go ahead and deal with that one. So voluntary agricultural, District One, we have the applicant Timothy Rhodes, we do have a nomination for Commissioner Mark, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we will accept him by acclamation. We'll go back up to under current, Farmers Relief Fund, Board of Trustees for Township Three, Mr. William McCoy does not wish to be reappointed, so we will attend to that, we will defer that one. Stuart Blunt, Township Eight, West New Bern wishes to be reappointed, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I would support that.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Blunt, are there additional nominations? Here none, we will accept him by acclamation. We move down to Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Ann York has not indicated her desire to continue serving or not. Ms. Nan, you have been in contact with her and heard nothing back, okay?
I believe, yeah, but I believe Ms. York is moved, moving out of Craven County to New England.
Okay, if it's all right with the board, we would defer consideration of that today, okay? Next you have the JCPC, Eric Queen does not wish to be reappointed. Does that, is that a special seat there, Nan, for him, or is it just a community seat? Why she's looking that one up. Erica Smith seeks appointment to fill the student vacancy seat.
She is a fine young woman and a, from a solid family background, I would recommend her.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Erica Smith, are there additional nominations? Here none, we will accept Ms. Smith by acclamation. We go back up to Mr. Queen's seat.
It does not appear to be.
Okay, so Commissioners can seek out an individual, just a community individual that don't have special requirements. All right, Commissioners, please take note of that and we will defer consideration of that one today also. All right, you have the upcoming terms, you see those, please take note. Are there any other appointments to be considered today by the board? Here none, we move to item ten, which is the county attorney's report.
Before you go to the county attorney's report, may I?
Yes ma'am.
The, the JCPC?
Yes.
Does it have to be from a given area? I know some of them.
No, it just, some seats are, have certain requirements, you know, of, maybe law enforcement, a district attorney, a judge, so, but Nan does have a record of all of those. Ms. Smith, if you want to?
Thank you.
Get those from her. All right, good morning sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning and Merry Christmas. I have three items for the board's consideration this morning, all three involve properties acquired by the county through the tax foreclosure process for which we've received offers to sell them. And to refresh the board's recollection with these properties, there's generally a very specific statutory process we go through. If we receive an offer, we're required to advertise it for upset bids and at times we may get multiple upset bids in an effort to generate the highest possible return for the county. Once the upset bid period closes, we're at liberty to finalize the contract and convey the property. There's a further wrinkle in these three in that the properties are actually jointly owned with the city of New Bern, which means the city was also a part of the original tax foreclosure and was owed past due taxes originally. In these situations, we basically let the city of New Bern go first to determine if a particular bid is acceptable and I think generally if the city says it's okay, we tend to follow suit, although that's not a statutory requirement, just a, a, a matter of practice and custom, I'll say. With that, the first offer is for property located at 115 Hillmont Road. We have an offer of seven thousand five hundred dollars. The original taxes foreclosed upon and the cost of that foreclosure were six thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. The tax value is fifteen thousand dollars. As I noted before, we do own this property with the city of New Bern, which has already approved this offer. If the board's inclined to approve it this morning, we'll put it out for upset bids and it'll be back before the board in 2023 for final approval.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution, parcel number eight dash two one nine dash zero zero six, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right. B?
The second parcel is located at 1000 Neuse Avenue with a parcel ID number of eight dash oh one five dash oh two three. We've got an offer of three thousand dollars. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were seven thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The tax value of this parcel was six thousand dollars. Again, this one is owned jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already approved this initial offer. If the board approves the initial offer, we'll put it out for upset bids and have it back before you in 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution, parcel number eight dash zero one five dash zero two three, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right. And C?
And the third and final matter is property located at eight oh six Main Street, again here in New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight dash oh oh six dash three five zero. We have a initial offer of two thousand dollars. And this is actually, I'm sorry, this is actually after the expiration of the upset bid process. So the initial bid of two thousand dollars is in fact the final bid after we've gone through the upset bid process. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. The tax value is four thousand dollars. The city of New Bern has given final approval to this transaction and if the board does likewise today, we'll get the deed to the purchaser shortly and it'll be back on the tax rolls for 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance, a parcel number eight dash zero zero six dash three five zero. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you sir. All right, county manager report, Mr. Jack Byke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. I want to just provide you some updates and a few important information for your calendars. On January eleventh, from nine to eleven thirty, we'll be celebrating, as we have in the past, our employee service members this year will have over a hundred and fifty employees that will be recognized for their service to Craven County. I did sign quite a, quite a few documents on Friday and I did note that we have two individuals who have received a reward for forty-five years each. A combined ninety years, so that was pretty remarkable. I think I did the math, they started in seventy-seven and seventy-six, I believe, were the two years they started. Interesting there, a lot of dedication. For the holiday season?
Jack, what time is that?
It's from nine until eleven thirty at the Convention Center on January the eleventh.
Thank you.
Nine to eleven thirty?
Yes ma'am. And of course, it's the holiday season, just a reminder to the Commissioners and the public, Craven County will be closed on Monday, December twenty-sixth and Tuesday, December twenty-seventh for the Christmas holiday. And also again, on January second for the New Year's holiday, which is a Monday, which means your next county commissioner meeting will be on Tuesday, January the third, at six PM in this room. So it's one day later than normal on that. Okay, so that's all the calendar gymnastics for the morning, so good to some updates here. I did attend a retirement ceremony for Ed Martin over at the airport. Ed was the longtime Assistant Director of Operations at the airport, a great guy and did a fantastic job on a lot of capital projects and moving pieces that had been going on in the airport for many years. We went and wished him well and he plans to stay in the area and focus on family, just to put that in the record. Also, the sheriff and I last week, and I'm glad he stayed, I asked him to, we met with- Also, the sheriff and I last week, and I'm glad he stayed, I asked him to, we met with some school folks about school safety. It was a great conversation, Sheriff, I think, and certainly get your feedback here in a minute. Most importantly, the sheriff and I had noted that the schools had received a grant for school safety and it was a rather large number that both of us taught, and we learned a lot more in that meeting. It is the second version of a grant we got three years ago and it is for more money. So, the things that will be included in there will be some additional funding to offset the cost of SRO officers. I believe, Sheriff, it was about $6,000 per officer that are included in that grant, which is the most recent SROs that you added, particularly at elementary schools. So, that would be where that funding goes. There were also some capital expenses there. They did agree to fund some technology for SROs along with some cameras in outside areas in schools that do not have them now. Sheriff, I feel like there was one more thing I'm missing here, sir.
Ballistic shields.
Yes.
For all of the SROs. And I would say it was probably one of the most productive meetings I've ever had with school.
You think it has to be.
And they did agree to help us fund quite a few things because they realized, you know, we had to pick up a burden of SROs and it's more than just a salary. It's radiance, it's weapons, it's cars, it's benefits, it's all that. And these grants really don't touch that. And they did agree to pick up and generally touch on it on board and bring it up to where the people are. It's a good meeting.
Right, absolutely. So, one of the challenges, and as we begin looking at our legislative docket for the next couple of years, I would remind you that the original SRO grants, which funded SROs at our high school and our middle schools, is still funded at a level of $38,900, which is the same number it was funded at in 2005 when I started in this business. And as long as the sheriff can remember, he's been involved in school safety for a long time. That number certainly has not kept up with inflation, nor has it kept up with the things the sheriff talked about, the intense need for equipment, extra hours outside of the normal school day, a variety of things. So, in our advocacy, I would highly recommend that we ask for a, you know, a CPI adjustment, something on a biannual basis that takes a look at that number. Now, the second grant, which is non-recurring funding, even though it has been appropriated a second time, is getting to a $55,000 number per officer, which is not perfect and is covering most of the salary, we think, but certainly not going toward benefits and equipment and things like that. So, a lot of work there, but gives us something to add to our list. Again, I agree with the sheriff, a great productive meeting. It wasn't just talking about money, it was talking about how we can do a better job in school safety, how we can communicate better. And I believe, Sheriff, we intend to do that four times a year now? Look forward to that. And then lastly, I look forward to the next month with our new commissioners. We'll be taking a tour of the county after New Year's, going and looking at all the county buildings and county properties. Some of the things we're talking about today, we'll actually go see. And we'll also be attending, along with Commissioner Smith, Essentials of County Government in Cary, the 11th and 12th of January, and look forward to that, learning more. And last, I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas from the management team and all the county employees. We hope you have a great one and look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Question.
All right.
I thought I noted that you said the 11th of January, we would be doing service awards.
Yes, ma'am, we'll leave that afternoon to Cary. I believe I may have misspoke, we'll travel on 11th and then Essentials will be 12th and 13th.
All right, additional questions for the county manager? I do have one, Jack, and you probably don't have any additional information, but I know the hot topic around this county is the Shriners' property.
Yes, sir.
People wanting to know what's going on and we want to be transparent, so any additional information to share with our board and citizens?
Absolutely. You know, I'm looking at Mr. Grady, he may have something I haven't heard about. But based on the last action the board took, we do have a vote of the Shriners on January the 7th. That'll be their general membership. Aries had some conversations with their attorney. Everything seems to be scheduled and on go for that. And we're still working toward, if that's successful, a January 31st closing date. Mr. Hodges has already had a variety of his staff, and Plank has some folks, so they're taking a look around at what we can do to immediately begin securing the facility and doing things we need to do moving forward.
Mr. Attorney.
I mean, that's correct. Nothing really to add. I believe confidence is fairly high that the membership of the Shriners will look at this favorably. And the, they've floated the idea, could we close earlier than the end of January, which we'll see how that works out administratively, but that's certainly a possibility. The title work and title update is done and is squeaky clean, as I like to say. So, as of right now, we've got all green lights across the board, so.
Any additional questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of points there. There was some media coverage of this initially. I know some of you got reached out to, we were as well. Citizen feedback's been fairly positive. Certainly, there's always going to be some folks that have a different opinion. I will tell you, I've heard less about the county buying it and more about the building. That's been if there was some angst about it. But I think in generalities, including over the weekend, I heard a lot of positive feedback about the county's dedication to New Bern. I think that there's, you know, there's a description problem when it comes to what our future use will be. Right now, we focus on protecting what we have, right? The parking lot that we lease and do not own, along with expanding it to the other side for, for that. But it's not just a parking lot. I think this board has to focus over the next year on what that plan is. You know, of course, we've talked about the possibility of another building. I'm excited about that, but we still also have the waterfront lot that needs some consideration as well. So, I don't want people to walk away thinking it's just a parking lot. I think it's quite a lot more than that. So, I'll just leave that on the record.
So, bottom line is what we want to share with the citizens of this county, they know what we know at this point.
Yes, sir.
And, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners' report. Commissioner Howard, you want to start this morning, sir?
I'm sure. Just to echo what the sheriff was saying, we are having a parade in Carolina Pines tonight, so everyone is welcome to join that. I'll also say that, just to go back to Commissioner Booker's comments on the Hickory Run at River Trace, I was in, on Bryces Creek Road at the intersection of Island County, maybe a week ago during rush hour, and it is, it is pretty bad. So, I do echo that consideration when we're approving these, these subdivisions that are being built everywhere that, you know, the people that live there, we, we make sure that we're considering that because not only was it congested, I felt like it was a bit dangerous at that particular, I think the, I think at the county line road and Bryces Creek Road where it intersects there. I mean, I almost witnessed an accident there myself, so I echo that. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the county staff and all the other commissioners that I serve with for their dedication and service to the community over 2022. And I look forward to seeing more of the same and working with everyone in 2023. I hope everyone has a safe and happy and fulfilling holiday season.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Mark.
Yeah, I'd like to wish the staff and all my constituents a happy Merry Christmas. And I'm just looking at my phone right now and my granddaughter's in the hospital about to have a baby boy and I'll be a great grandfather.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hunt.
Oh, yes. I'd like to let everyone know that I thoroughly enjoyed both the Havelock Christmas Parade and the Cove City Parade. I look forward to attending both of those again next, next year. I also attended Race Across America this past weekend. It meant a lot to me as a veteran. I think it's imperative that we share our history with our children so they understand where we came from and where we need to go moving forward. Besides doing all that, I've been busy working with Craven County staff and the sheriff's department to get some areas cleaned up in District Five. I want to say thank you both to Craven County staff and to sheriff's office for assisting with those endeavors. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Smith.
I too would like to echo a thank you to the department. They have really continued to help me and support my interests, so I really appreciate that. And I would like to share a couple of things that I have been involved with over the past week. On last Monday, I attended the Pelletier Ministries program at the convention center and our sheriff was there as well. It would take the morning to share what was covered, is that not right? Our sheriff was a part of it. But they presented to the public, support resources from food to, to give away for Christmas, to introducing them to or reminding them of resources throughout the county, the area, and the state that will be available to them. It was fantastic. And Sheriff, will you speak to part of that because immediately, I can't immediately cover, but I, I really think that it was worth.
Yes. It was a, it was really one of the best events that I've gone where so many resources were brought into our convention center. Convention center staff, Jack, did a phenomenal job in hosting this thing. Everything was well organized. Myself, Sheriff Asa Buck from Carteret County, Sheriff Chris Davis, and our district attorney, Scott Thomas, were on a board where question and answers. And we answered some questions, but talked about the resources that we had in place. How were we addressing resiliency and public safety? Some of the things I addressed personally was the recidivism rate that we had when I came into county government elected as sheriff and where it is now and the steps that we've taken and processes that we've put in place. We talked about resources at each of our offices, the partnership that we, the great partnership we have with our district attorney. And I certainly thanked our Commissioner Smith for being there and for her support of our office. So, it was very well done and just the resources that we have in this county are phenomenal. And a lot of people walked away from there and everything I heard was really positive. And a lot of them didn't know we had all this stuff available to us. So, I think a lot of people were impacted and have a lot of great information and have already started reaching out to resources. I've already gotten calls from some of the faith-based organizations that were there wanting to get into our jail. So, it was a very positive event.
It was, very.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also went to the fire department number nine's dinner and awards ceremony and that was delightful. I enjoyed that. Met a lot of old friends that I know in that area, since I'm from the area. And the last thing that I'd like to mention briefly is the East Carolina Council's grocery reimbursement program. Jack asked me to work with the people in my area since many of them would qualify for this. And so, I am doing that, trying to get this information out into the community. And I've also contacted Alicia Anderson Brown at Senior Services, who will help people if they have problems making the contacts, making the connections, filling out paperwork to get these reimbursements if they qualify. So, we are working on that at this time.
Good, thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker.
Thank you. I think the old Christmas song says, "This is the most wonderful time of the year." And it is for most of us, but there are those folks who have suffered a loss recently or who are struggling with who knows what variety of things. We heard some of the things here earlier today. So, just a reminder that we need to, to reach out and, and do our best to comfort those folks who need, need to be comforted as they go through this difficult time. And Merry Christmas to everybody. I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Last thing I will also just say, on behalf of Jennifer Emily and I, we wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, look forward to working with each of you in 2023. And I've got a big year ahead for us all and to our citizens of Craven County, we thank you for the opportunity that you allow us to be able to serve you. Anything else to bring before the board of Commissioners this morning? Here none, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and adjourned.